Okay, we're gonna shoot the flag.
The flag is related to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under thy indubitable liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is approval of minutes for May's meeting. Are there any changes or corrections for anybody?
I have none.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are done. Next one is public hearing for Steven Spurrell, 16 Black Diamond Road Garrison. An applicant is seeking a special permit to construction 987 square foot accessory structure with apartment. It's under chapter 175 20B. It requires a special permit. And I guess you're gonna speak? And you're from...
I'm Annie Menace from Garrison Foundry Architecture. And our permit was flagged because our project is off of a private road. So that was the reason for... We're seeking a special permit or variance, I guess. I wasn't sure. Special permit, special use permit.
This is for a special permit?
Yeah, special use permit.
Accessory apartment, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So it's because it's on a private road. Otherwise, my understanding is we comply that we are under 1,000 square foot footprint. That's kind of the logistics. But Steven and his mom and dad are here. And we spoke a little bit last time about why they're building this accessory structure. It has multiple uses. One, the main use is for... Steven and his parents bought this house about a year ago. Steven lives in the city and he has three children. And the house has three bedrooms and it's fairly small. And so when Steven and his family come up, they need more space for family and friends and that kind of thing.
Right.
So it's an overflow space is one use for it. Also for Steven, for his office. He works from home a lot up here, as many people do. And then also, there's a pool structure there, but there's no pool accessory building for it. So it's... The use is sort of a multi-use for the family. And I think last time, they asked, you know, the question of would it be intended for an Airbnb? And that's absolutely never going to be the intent here or ever be used for that. It's really a particular need for this family because they have three kids and two grandparents and two parents, and it's just not enough space for them. And also, the way that the house is situated with a pool, it makes sense to create this extra space for them in this way.
Right. Well, I'm just reading the denial letter from the code enforcement officer. He says that he's requiring you to get a special permit for accessory apartment.
Yes, I think it's because of the private road. That was my understanding.
Well, yeah, there's a couple of different things.
Sure.
It's an apartment, it's such a... There's a bedroom in there, there's a kitchen in there, and so on and so forth.
Right.
I mean, you know...
Right, which is mainly because of the pool. They want to have...
It's a second house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know...
It's like a kitchen and everything, it's a second house.
Right, it's a kitchenette. But, yeah, I agree. And the reason why they want to have an ability to cook there is because they want to have overflow from the pool, come over, hang out, living space.
Well, I understand completely. You know, not... Unfortunately, it falls under that category.
Absolutely.
That you have to get a special permit.
Yes, yeah, we're not trying to hide anything.
Right, no, I know. Be very upfront, and it makes a lot easier for us when you're upfront with this, okay?
Yeah.
Well, that's for sure. So like I say, this doesn't come under the... You know, we'd have to do the five factors for this, you know. Of course, there's not a variance, a special part. But it does come under the requirements. And I'm looking at it, and I'm seeing that they board a health... You said you had a board of health approval on this?
We do, we do, yes.
Do you have it with you?
I believe the town has it. If not, we can get a copy. We have... We've been working on the project for about two years.
Okay.
So we have... I have the set here, plus Beatty and Watson's drawings. We have the approved board of health approval for both the septic and for the additional bedroom.
All right, 'cause that falls under this, 'cause under 175 12 3, it says, "No permit shall be granted for an accessory apartment without the certification of the county board of health."
Yeah, I'll make sure that you get a copy.
Septic tank.
But, yeah, we don't have the letter with it, I believe.
I believe we do have a county health department approval stamp.
Yeah.
It's part of the package.
Yeah, maybe it's on Beatty and Watson's drawings.
Yeah.
Or it is...
But we also have a letter.
You got a letter, yeah.
We have a letter as well, so I can get you a copy.
They usually say send a letter with it, okay?
Yeah, no problem.
So I didn't make sure you had that, otherwise, you know, you're not gonna be able to get the building permit. Okay. I'm trying to ask any other questions. Let's see what we have here. Is this a private road, or...
It's a private road, so that was... That was my understanding why it got flagged, I guess.
Okay. Is there a maintenance agreement on this road? I mean, for whose those are plowing and stuff and everything else like that? There is? Okay.
It does give you the fact that it has a...
Could you come up there? 'Cause I got a question on the...
We don't have all the tax figures at hand, but, yeah, I think we do have a maintenance agreement. And Polhemus Construction does the plowing and the maintenance on the road. When it's snowy, they plow it and...
Okay, so there's a couple houses there that are in this agreement?
Yeah, I think we have, like, four neighbors, and we supplied their contact information and details in the package that we submitted back in May.
Okay. Now, I'm looking at this section here on it. It says, "If an accessory apartment is created on a lot which is accessed by a private right-of-way or easement for which there is a written maintenance agreement, no special permit shall be issued unless the maintenance agreement is amended to require the owner of the dwelling with the accessory apartment to pay an increased proportionate share of the cost of maintaining said right-of-way or easement to reflect the existence of an accessory apartment." I don't know how that comes in, because I don't see... You're not making a special road for this, right? I mean...
We're not making a special road for it, no. It's built, like, literally, like, right across from the...
Yeah.
From the main house.
Can we get...
Huh?
A lawyer can turn it to this person.
Yeah. Adam, what would... Did you read that?
What section are you reading from?
I'm in section 175 12, number five, requiring, you know, apartments, accessory apartments. 175 12 5. C5, I'm sorry. C5.
I can look and see if I have a copy somewhere of the...
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I'm just trying to see, you know, according to this, it says it has to be amended. I guess that means you would pay more into the thing. I just want to see how we... How this works legally, which... That's why I asked your attorney.
Sure, I have to look back in my records to find the... Whether or not I have a copy of that agreement.
Right.
And we pay into it every...
Right, every quarter or something a year?
Exactly. For, you know, for the plowing and maintenance with Polhemus Construction. But I don't think I have my inbox copy. But I'm sure I could get it.
Right.
You can kind of see right here. This is the end of the loop, and then the house is right here. But they have the septic.
No, I can't just say... I was saying, I read it, you know, because these are the requirements for the accessory apartment, and so on and so... Like, the 40,000 square feet, you fit that and all like that. And you got the board of health permit. But I saw here, it says that it's supposed to... The agreement's supposed to amend it to require the owner to pay an increased proportionate share. So I'm just asking, attorney...
I mean, yeah, that could be a condition of approval. How would we...
Does it tie into... I mean, I think that either way, it's fine, but I wonder, just from... Does it have any language as far as, like... I understand if there's an extra road to plow that goes to some new structure, but maybe it's moot. I mean, if it doesn't...
It's all the same, so that's...
Or just extra...
Yeah, I guess what they're looking at, figuring that there would be another car or two or something like that.
Another car, yeah.
I guess that's how it reads.
Let me guess, let me guess.
It would be the same number of people again. Like, it's just really, there is, right now, the bedroom situation in the main house is just inadequate if we're gonna start spending, you know, summers at the property.
Right.
Which we already do, and so our car already stays in Garrison full year round. Like, we don't... We gave up our parking space in the city, our car, and my parents' car are the only two cars that are there, and the only two cars that would be there going there.
No, I understand that.
With three.
Are they gonna grow up and drive?
No. Not like they do. I mean, like, eventually, yes. Like, maybe when they're, you know, like, eventually, yes.
You're not more than two eventually.
Yeah, the oldest one is 13, so I'm hoping that cars are not gonna come into the picture for a long time.
All right.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. The answer is not for the, you know, not for at least five years.
Yeah, but I see, but to cover us legally, okay, is what I'm trying to say. This is a requirement.
Okay.
Okay? So attorney says we could make that a contingent?
You could make it a condition of approval.
Okay, make it a condition of approval if it gets approved, that you would have to speak with your board or your group who handles this and see if the... They want extra money, if you're gonna kick in extra money for that. If they say no or something, it's fine. Just you'd have to... You'd have to give us a letter one way or the other.
Got it. So a letter signed by our neighbors saying that we have...
Or signed by whoever's in charge of the group, whoever handles... Whoever... Who you pay the maintenance to?
Right.
I mean, you know, that person, just a letter that, "You're putting accessory apartment in, and there's not gonna be any more traffic because of normal traffic," but it could be. You understand what I'm trying to say?
I do.
Like, let's say you were to sell, the next guy could end up renting it out.
Sure, yeah, okay, yeah, totally. So we could talk to our neighbors and/or whoever handles the maintenance arrangement for...
Whoever handles the maintenance.
With Polhemus and, you know...
Right.
Provide them with, you know, overview of our plans and explain to them what's going on and figure out...
Right, like I said, what it says here, it says that the...
Well, yeah, just to... I mean, if you look at that section, 175 12, I'm not sure if there is or is not a written road maintenance agreement. I don't know.
I don't either, yeah.
But what I'm saying is, the next section is, "If an accessory apartment is created on a lot which is accessed by a private right-of-way or easement for which there is no written maintenance agreement, section C5 above, which is what the chairman referred to, shall not apply."
Yeah, so if there is no written agreement...
So if there is no written road maintenance agreement, the way the code is written, there is nothing to amend, and it doesn't apply.
Right.
Got it.
So we could still make it a condition of approval, if, of course, the board approves, that satisfaction of this requirement in the code would need to be satisfied before the building department could issue a building permit for the proposed dwelling unit.
Got it.
Okay, so if there's no written agreement, you know, if you guys... Then you don't need it, but...
So first order of business, let me get to the bottom of that and figure out whether there is or not. And if there is not, then it seems like this is moot, and if it is, we'll talk about it with our neighbors, and we'll get a letter.
We'll need that before you... I can give you a...
If it's approved, can I give the form for the building permit or not?
No, because this is a conditional approval, so it would need to wait satisfaction of the conditions. Normally, you can give someone that slip if there are no conditions to be satisfied and they're done, but here, there are.
Okay, what are you saying... What attorney you're saying is, we have... Like, if we approved it tonight, I could give you a slip, and you could go to tomorrow to the building department, he would give you a building permit.
Okay.
Okay, I can't do that because you don't have this answered. But we don't have to wait another month, okay? All you gotta do is get an answer, okay, and give it to our secretary, you know, either one way or the other, okay? And I will go up to the office and sign it for you.
Okay.
Okay, so that way, it'll be there, so you don't have... You could do it within a couple of days, you know, we don't have to wait till next month's meeting, right?
But it doesn't have to be approved by a meeting, right, Adam? I don't have to... I could do this. We don't have to wait for... Do we have to wait for another meeting?
I mean, you can vote, and if you deem fit to approve with conditions, you can do that tonight.
Right.
And I'll prepare a resolution. But what the conditions mean is that a building permit won't be issued until the condition is satisfied.
Okay. You understand?
Yes.
Okay. Any board members have questions on this at any time?
How come you don't have the attachment to the main dwelling?
So we talked about that, and I think we decided for two reasons. One, the main reason being that the construction would be very disruptive to our enjoyment of the property as it was happening, right? So we thought it would be less disruptive if it was happening, you know, away from the property, such that, you know, they were not tearing down walls and, you know, having a lot of noise going on, 'cause we hoped to, you know, continue to, you know, enjoy the property over the summer when the construction was happening. We're a little delayed in our... We were thinking it would, you know, this would... We would start back in, you know, May with the construction, and that it would be going on during the penancy of the summer, and, you know, that it would be better if that was happening sort of away from the main dwelling. The second reason was that it was just, as you can see, you know, we kind of have a vision for when we have people over to swim in the pool, hang out on the deck. You know, we've got this nice...
Where is the pool located next to that? Where is the... Where would the pool be?
Sure. It's basically like, kind of like, in front of those doors that open. So like, the idea is we can throw that open, we've got the kitchen, we can be bringing out food, you know, people can be going in, going out. We've got a TV on the wall behind those doors, people can be watching the game, like...
That's great. We'll be there Sunday.
There you go. Everybody's invited, so we've...
This is the existing house. And initially, we did... I'm so sorry. So the existing house is here, and the existing pool is here. And they have this very beautiful flat piece of property, which is unusual for Garrison. Architecturally, we did look at trying to attach it here, but this house has a lot of very unusual roof angles and funny conditions. It just looked very odd, too. It didn't... It wasn't harmonious with the house. It would have been disruptive. It wasn't gonna get them what they want, because it's not in a nice spot of the house. It's sort of in the back by the not pretty part of the house. So for ease of construction, cost of construction being very kind of simple and just a rectangle, and then also to enjoy the property, the land, you know? That's this beautiful spot here. It's a low-rise building, they have a very pretty river view. And if we had tucked it back here, it's a very steep slope here.
You have to build super high also to see, 'cause this deck is kind of elevated, so we would've had to build up and in front of our neighbors in order to actually be able to preserve a view of the river, whereas if we build over...
The hills and the angles going down and everything?
That's right.
Yeah.
We have that on all the Beatty and Watsons. Also, here we have it. I mean, it gets very steep here, so this is really not buildable. And then the septic is here. So we had, you know, limiting factors as far as where we could do it.
You can't see it on that map.
That's a problem.
Oh, no problem. You have the Beatty and Watsons. For some reason, I didn't bring the Beatty and Watsons site plan with us. But this is our site, but this is the original survey. This is the original survey, which you can see a little bit better. But you do have the... I apologize, I don't have the Beatty and Watsons, but in your packages, you have the Beatty and Watsons plan right there. But you can see, these are the topos. It's a little darker on this plan. So this whole part is completely flat, almost completely flat. And then it has a steep dive down to the neighbor property. So this is not really buildable area, plus it wouldn't be attractive. And then, again, over here, this would be very difficult from an architectural perspective to build on what Steven was saying about trying to elevate it. It's a raised pool, so they would have to come up higher even just to walk to the pool, irregardless of a view. So we're trying to keep it very simple and beautify the land and make use of this nice piece of property there. They already use this place already. They have a little fire pit over there. It's a nice spot that's sort of underutilized on their other land.
What's the property line will be?
I think we have that on the Beatty and Watsons, too, but I believe we're like 50 feet, around 50 feet. We can look on our... We're well within our setback.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. On the Beatty and Watsons.
Not including into the setback.
Yeah, we're further off than we need to be.
Yeah.
Your neighbors, will this be visible to your neighbors?
Not to. The only person who could possibly see it would be the neighbor up the hill, but they see everyone's house. So this low-rise, one-story structure would be less obtrusive than the existing house that's here. It doesn't impede their view, doesn't impede their... We're trying to keep it just a very simple kind of Garrison-like house with, you know, cedar shake shingles on the outside and just a very simple structure, something that feels very harmonious and sort of easy, you know, nothing that's gonna make a statement or...
Nearest neighbor?
The neighbor...
Approximately.
Yeah.
No, I didn't give you an exact name.
Who do you think your nearest neighbor is across the street?
As far as you can see this property?
As far as who could see, or who...
I'm talking about Linus...
Oh, then probably across the street, your...
Patty Smith.
Patty Smith across the street would be the closest in proximity to the house.
But she wouldn't have any, like, visibility of this structure, because from her point of view, the main house would get in the way.
She would know if she had any...
Probably she would be here, or she would let us know herself.
She would be here. She would be...
Believe me, so...
Yeah, they had a lot of conversations about that. They didn't want it to feel unusual to the house itself, and also not... You really wanted it to feel very...
That was a... And that was a big reason for not going here and attaching to the property, 'cause it would... We would've had to build higher in order to have a view of the river, and that would've gotten in the way of the Schweppes?
The Schweppes and the Sea Carters. And we've had many conversations with them about how we can accommodate their view. They actually... Their address is Upper Station Road, but they're adjacent to our property.
When you finish, how many square feet total building would it be?
The building is on...
Between two buildings.
Oh, the house...
How many square feet will it be between two buildings?
The house is 2,800, roughly, and then the main house is, so I guess a little less than 3,800, somewhere in that range.
So total be 3,800, something like that?
Something like that, yeah.
This is 987.
Yeah, so somewhere in that range. I think the house is a little less than 2,800.
This is the... The no one would be 987.
I'm with the total.
Yeah. Well, 987 plus the 2,800.
Okay.
I'm wondering the understanding...
Well, you have to stand up, okay? Come on over here, okay? Take your time. Just tell us who you are.
My name's Eugene Lowe. I live at 40 Upper Station Road.
Okay.
And my understanding is our property is between Patty Days and their property. So my question is, how close are you to our property?
So I don't... I don't think that that can be right, because Patty is... So Black Diamond... If Black Diamond Hill is right here, Patty is across the street from us, so there's nothing in between our property and Patty's property other than the road.
On this little site plan, where are you? So this is, you know...
So I might have the wrong route, but I got a letter that you were up against our property in the mail. I am across the street from Patty Hurst's driveway. Our driveway's across...
Oh, you're far away.
Not Patty Hurst, Patty Smith.
I'm sorry.
Patty Smith.
Yeah, you're on a different road, actually. I don't think you'd be able to see this house from your house.
So you're not on the road in the back, the private road?
No.
You might be possibly for the next, for Lower Station?
Patty Road? No, we're on Upper Station Road.
Okay.
So you live between the Sea Carters and the church?
No. I live on the... When you come up, we're the first property on the left side.
Oh, you're far, you're far.
And I believe Patty Smith is up against us on the left. Our driveway is across from Patty Days, Patty Hurst Day.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have no...
Black Diamond Road is our...
Our property at all, no.
So Black Diamond is basically at the bottom by the train station.
On lower, lower.
Off of Lower Station Road.
Station Road.
Yes.
Right, I was confused, because they sent a letter.
I have a question.
Are you on the same road, that private road?
I am not in the private road, no.
Okay, all right.
We are not. We are off of Upper Station Road.
Okay, all right. Do you... Are your concerns answered with this, or where...
I was... I received the letter, and I'm not as good as I should be. And I thought Black Diamond, but I thought they were talking about Patty Smith's property goes along the side of the back, and there's a private road. When you come up out of Garrison Landing, if you don't make the turn...
I think it's Patty Smith's house, so I know who that could be talking about.
Right, right. So our property comes down there. So I was thinking, is that why they're getting a letter? Are they... They have a pool. Are they building another house? So I received a letter from the township, so I guess that is what confused me, what I needed clarity on.
Right, right. Okay, do you have any concerns about this?
Not on the other side of the road, no. Only if it was on the other private road up against our property.
Good, good thing you came.
I thought you came.
Good thing you came.
Yeah. Clarity, for this clarity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for the misunderstanding.
That's okay.
The court was very thorough.
That's what this is all about.
Got me a letter out.
That's why we send the letters out, so people know, and they know what's going on. There's no secrets here, and that's why everybody knows what's going on.
So I could be educated.
I'm glad you've learned something.
I guess I need to come more often.
Sure, come all the time. We got seats. Don't worry about it.
I'm cool.
There's only room.
Thank you.
Okay.
One thing, is the accessory... Am I correct from reading the drawings that the accessory building is no more than 21 feet high?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very... It's low-rise, it's one level, and it's low-rise, and basically, it's on a slab.
Okay.
So it's a one-story...
It's one story.
Structure, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions in the board? Any other board members have any questions? It's a public hearing. Anybody in the audience would like to speak to this, besides the young lady who just spoke? No? Okay, that's it. Well, then, at this point, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, of course, okay. On a call for a vote, now, if it's approved, it's gonna be contingent, right, Adam?
Right, I'll write a... In the resolution, I'll make any approval contingent on satisfaction of the requirements for an accessory apartment as such forth in the code.
Okay, and you could find out, or, you know, get that settled, and then let the secretary know, and she'll let our...
I'm embarrassed, I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm sure that Patty will know, or, yeah, we can find out very...
It may not be a maintenance agreement, I don't know. But, like I say, the attorney, it's covered both ways.
Right, right.
Okay, is what I'm trying to say.
If there is a written maintenance agreement, then we will... We will talk to our neighbors and figure out if we need to...
They might want any money from you, just the fact that they know that it's there, you know, like that and everything, it's like that.
Right.
Okay, all right. The public hearing is closed, and a call for a roll call vote. Mr. Stone?
I'd vote in favor.
Mr. Lynn?
I'll vote in favor. I vote to approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay, so you're set.
Thank you.
Like I said, what the attorney said, he's gonna write the resolution, so it's gonna take a week or something like that?
I could certainly get it out within, like, the next 14 days.
Okay, all right. And then you'll let the secretary know, she'll call him, and we're all set.
It'll give us time to figure out our situation.
Okay, I don't wanna hold you up any longer than you have to be in your construction.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, you're all set.
Okay.
When it gets hot in July, we might see you at the pool, so don't... Okay, you know, all right.
It's gonna be a little chilly at the pool.
You made it sound... You made it sound really good.
I'm not a basketball student.
Okay, all right. Next order of business is, let's see, proposed accessory structure at 77 Lower Station Application proposes an accessory structure at approximately 500 square feet of disturbance on steep slope. Also, the floor area of proposed accessory apartment excludes a total allowable 800 square foot, or 30% of the 1,260 square foot principal house. Proposed accessory structure is 988 square feet. Since the steep slopes in accessory apartment diminishes dimensions, do not meet the requirements of the Phillips Dam zoning, so now I'd on 175 36B, 175 12C, and building permit is denied. Is anybody gonna speak here for that tonight? You?
I am also here for that.
You got that? Okay. All right, take your time. I see you got a letter... You got a letter signed here, too, that you're gonna represent them, right? Okay.
Yeah, so it's sort of a funny coincidence that I'm here again. Both of these projects have been going on for a year and...
Both of these projects have been going on for a year and change.
Right.
This one a little shorter than the last project, and they happen to share some characteristics. We do other work than accessory structures, but these two just happen to be unusual circumstances that these families are trying to solve through this use. Charity is here, one of the owners, introduce her. Here, they live on Lower Station Road.
Okay.
And they have a small, smaller home that we have done work on over the years. It's sort of a very sweet kind of typical Garrison cottage. It's about 1,300 square feet. And they, they're both two working adults with three kids. And that said, they, they, they have no problem with the size of their house. They like the size of their house, the way that it's set on the property, again, they have an unusual property, but they're not looking to expand their house, put an addition on.
Right.
But they have two working adults that need office space and storage space, that there's no space to store things in a 1,300 square foot house.
Recreation room?
Recreation room for kayaks and things like that. So we're here to talk about this project on two different levels. One is because the house is 1,300 square feet, this proposed structure is over 50% of what the current square footage of the house is.
Right.
And then also, the way that the, the way that the house is, is sitting, there's a portion of the house that is on a steep slope. So there's two different conditions that we're addressing tonight, and we're hoping to get your feedback on and talk it through.
Well, I spoke with the attorney, of course, I was a little confused on the-
We spoke today as well, so, yeah, we clarified.
Because it comes under accessory apartment and you're not putting accessory-
It's an accessory structure, right, right, exactly.
So I think you, and Adam, you spoke with her on that or?
Correct.
Correct?
We clarified that, yeah.
Okay, so, no, no, it's not your fault, I'm just trying to say, I'm reading it here. So what you're really looking for is a variance on the area.
The area.
The area for the building. And the other thing would be especially used for mid for the steep slopes. That has to go through the planning department.
Right, right, we spoke a little bit about that today. And then we also talked to Beatty and Watson, and I understand he talked to you, Jason spoke with you a little bit. So I'm, I'm fairly clear, and I spoke to Charity about the possible next steps if, you know-
Right, well, next step would be the quickest way to do it, I don't want to send you there and then come back and forth and like that. We spoke, quickest way to do it I think would be for us to, if we feel the package is complete, we'll vote on that, and we'll set up a public hearing next month.
Okay.
Okay, but then you'll have to get in touch way before that with the planning board, get in touch with them as quick as you can, okay?
Right.
Because even if we approved it, we wouldn't be able to give you a permit.
Right. I was, when I was discussing with Beatty and Watson, whenever you're ready, it could be as soon as tomorrow if things go, I can set up like a pre-op meeting, if that would make sense, with the planning department. Beatty and Watson and myself can sit down with Greg and the town engineer and kind of go over the steep slope issues and look at their plan and how we're trying to solve some of, some of the steep slope.
Yeah, yeah.
If that makes sense.
We, we would, you know, I can write a letter on behalf of the zoning board referring the steep slope component of the application to the planning board, just so you have-
Sure.
A record of that.
Okay, that, that, we'll see how it all goes, but it sounds great.
That's probably the easiest way, because if I, if I just send you there, then you've got to go back here and go back there, back and forth, it'd be another couple of months before you-
Right, the last thing we want to do is, yeah, kind of spun and we're all there.
Well, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah.
Okay, so, does anybody have any questions on this for tonight, I mean, as far as complete?
Basically, it was not complete.
I'm sorry?
It's not complete.
Okay, why?
You just said we have to, we have to get more work.
Well, yeah, but we're talking about the application, it has to go to the planning board, but we're, all we're looking at is variance.
Okay.
That's the only thing, we're just doing, we're doing the variance for the size of the house, I mean, our structure that they're building is more than 30%-
Right.
-of the original structure. As far as the steep, steep slopes, we're not getting involved in that. If we would, if we were to approve the variance, we still couldn't give them a building permit because of the, we'd have to wait for the permit for the approval for the planning board.
Right, and just so we're all clear, because there, I was getting confused, too, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the difference, an accessory structure can be no more than 50%, right, and then, or 800 square feet, and an accessory apartment is the 30, 30%.
Right.
Am I right about that?
I, I have to look it up, but-
Yeah. Yeah, you're proposing an accessory structure-
Right.
-as it's defined by the code, and because the structure that you're proposing is greater than half the size of the principal building-
Right.
-you need a variance for that.
Right, right.
Area variance.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, the confusing, the confusing part was the accessory apartment thing, that, that kind of threw, threw us all off, I think.
Sure, yeah, me too.
Okay, but attorney, he'll speak to the building inspector and he'll-
Yes, we'll, I'll follow up with that, yeah.
They'll work that out, okay. It looks like you have every here. I need the five factors, but I think you had the five factors here.
Yeah.
Huh?
In the back room.
They got in the back there, the back of what?
Back of the application? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see, right, thanks. Okay, you got the, you got the plans and you got the survey, so it looks complete to me. Anybody have any questions on completeness? I just plan to make a motion that the application is complete, we'll set up a public hearing next meeting, which would be Monday, July 11th. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you're all set, you pretty much know where, what track we're on now?
Wonderful, appreciate it, so we'll see you in a month.
Yes.
And I will follow up with the planning department and Greg.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, all new business, old business? I was, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Carter's not here tonight, but she did an email and she told me that she spoke with the town attorney regarding the 5G, you know, so they're going to look into the 5G and, yeah, he's going to look into 5G and see if the, you know, I know there are other towns that do have, you know, codes to it, you know, so maybe he can, maybe we can get some codes so we don't get caught like we did with the wind turbine.
Right.
Okay, any other, anything else, other business? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No argument there, okay. Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.